An email for a site walk at the Ice House on the 5th. That's going to be with the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust and with the Select Board, just to view those affordable units. We should be getting lottery information soon to be putting on our website and, you know, other webpages. So that's one of the upcoming items. Another item is we have our own public forum coming up on the 17th. And we went ahead and made a flyer for that. So I just wanted to share it with the board to see if they had any questions, comments, edits before we go ahead and get that marketed to everybody.
Yeah, Cheyenne did a great job of working this up and just wanted to let the board take a look to see if there was any information that anyone would want to add. Looks very nice. And where will this get? I know you said the Milton Times, Cheyenne, and where else will this get?
Well, we'll send this out to Milton Times, Milton Scene. I believe we're going to post it on the town website or social media pages. And I believe we'll also send it to the Facebook pages, so like everything Milton and East Milton Neighborhood Association, just to get it kind of on all platforms.
Great, that's terrific. Does that look good to everybody?
Yep.
So with the Ice House Site Walk, I don't know if I can make it, but if more than three of us show up, I mean, if I show up last minute, do we have to post it? Is that a problem?
Yeah, I think we should just...
I already posted an agenda just in case anybody decided to show up last minute. So everybody's good to come or not come.
Great, thank you.
Perfect.
No problem. And I think that's all of my updates for now.
Great, Cheyenne, thank you so much. That looks great. All right. So following this, we, I don't know if we have any, we didn't have Citizens Speak on here, but I just, I wanted to let people know that if there's something on the agenda, you're certainly welcome to speak at any of, on any of those items from the public. So, so we can now, we can move to our presentation from the Blue Hills. Yes, if you'd like to join us and...
I'm Russ Parkman.
Yeah, if you'd like to pull up a seat and have a...
Sit right down, yeah.
Yeah, and pull up a microphone so you can, people, folks on Zoom can hear you clearly. Great.
Cheyenne, could you load the presentation?
Is it up on the screen?
Yep. Just need to, just go to slideshow. There we go. So my name's Russ Parkman. I'm a trustee-at-large for Friends of Blue Hills, a nonprofit organization. I've been a trustee for about two years, a board member for about two years. And I joined, you know, because of love of Blue Hills and to help support the DCR. Blue Hills have been very important to me and my family for decades. And it's my way of, you know, contributing back to this unique area around Boston, which has, you know, just, I think everybody here is familiar with Great Blue Hill and what a great, you know, vista we have at the top and all the great hiking trails. But, you know, to maybe make everybody more educated about what Friends of Blue Hills does, I thought I'd give this presentation and I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of the Town of Milton and the Planning Board itself. So the first, Friends of Blue Hills formed in the 1970s. And we're in support of DCR. The reservation, it's about 7,000 acres, is owned by the state of Massachusetts and managed by DCR. And DCR, of course, doesn't have, you know, that many resources. And so this volunteer nonprofit organization was formed to help protect and support the DCR in maintaining trails and trash cleanup and other advocacy issues. For 40 years, Friends of Blue Hills has engaged the public in activities to protect the park by preventing encroachments, increasing park resources, and improving park management. Next slide, please. So what is our mission? You know, we started in the 70s and we were pretty small, you know, for a long time. Recently now, we have over 1,000 members. Really, you know, different from Mass Audubon or the trustees, Friends of Blue Hills, of course, doesn't limit access to the Blue Hills. Mass Audubon and DCR, you cannot access their property unless you have paid their membership fee, right, their hiking trails. So, you know, we understand that. We understand that our members really are doing this as an act of gratitude to help support and maintain the park because it doesn't, they can go hiking there anytime. They don't need us, right? So what we do is we're trying to help preserve the natural beauty, diverse habitat, recreational opportunities. We're an advocate. We guide enthusiasts. We encourage involvement, protection, and preservation. And we work with the DCR to maintain the quality of the reservation and provide public input. The DCR has limited staff. And so when you go out in the trails and you see how clean they are and how maintained, mostly it's because of Friends of Blue Hills and the volunteers that help us. We have corporations that come out, coordinate through us, and build bridges, maintain trails, build boardwalks. All this, the board itself is entirely volunteer, working board. And, you know, we have a lot more impact than a lot of people recognize. We don't really advertise that much. You won't see our signs necessarily out there. I'm trying to get some signs out there to get a little bit more recognition, recognition so that people just don't think it's DCR land. But we do a lot for the park. Next slide, please. Right now, we have 11 volunteer board members, four paid staff. Our board president, Matt Pinucci, he is stepping down in April. And we're going to elect a new president. We don't know who that is. Excuse me, Matt has been great. He's been a good person. I know everybody here probably knows Matt. We've worked with Ron Israel with the Milton Climate Action Change Committee. I've worked with Ron as well on that. And so we are a big partner with Milton itself. We have a relatively new executive director, Jen Klein. She comes over from the trustees. I don't know if you've got a chance to meet her or talk with her, but she's fantastic. She, we love Judy. Judy was a great executive director for 18 years. But Jen brings a little bit different energy and has expanded our influence, you know, meeting with more state reps and more corporations and other communities to help expand our visibility and our influence for protecting Blue Hills. And of course, we have hundreds of volunteers. We, our best volunteer event is always the monthly trail maintenance. We get people out there because it's physical and they can actually see what they're doing. But we also have other volunteers that help out with mailings, advocacy, reviewing, for example, planning board meeting minutes to see if there's any development that might be coming up. So we have a lot of volunteers that participate in ways that might not be visible to everybody. Next slide. So what do we do besides, you know, clean up trails? Well, we do advocacy, like I'm the committee chair for the advocacy group, stewardship, and education. We run educational programs for little kids. And we have many hikes and many events that we participate in and try to educate as well as meet with other groups. Like, for example, we have running groups out there, Trail Animals Running Club, where we promote, you know, they want to run and the trail's great. But then we also try to institute something like, let's get some trash pickup or let's protect, let's not leave caution tape everywhere so you can mark the trails. Try to make sure that these activities are done in a responsible manner. Next slide. And then, this is something that, you know, I chaired and it's part of the advocacy group is we did what we called a buffer study. And we commissioned this about two years ago. And what we did was we looked at all the private property parcels that abutted DCR, the 7,000 acre reservation. And we wanted to know, you know, what's under, under potential development? Where could development be adversary to Blue Hills? Where could we work with people, such as planning boards, to create responsible development? We understand property will be developed. It's part of the, your zoning bylaws. But if there's a chance, and I'll give you an example in a little bit, you know, we would like to have some influence and some say or be able to review at least some of the development which might impact it. Next slide, please. So you can see here, as far as Milton's concerned, there's the town boundary and you can see the properties. And these properties, we had a consultant come in and put a risk assessment on individual properties. Of course, this information's public, but I don't, we're not bringing up property names or people who own these properties. The darker the color, the more risk there is to a type of development that might be adversary or impact the Blue Hills to a greater extent. And so, you know, what I've instituted in the advocacy committee is someone to look at the planning board website, planning board meeting minutes, agenda, as well as Conservation Commission. And if there's a property that comes up that said, hey, we want to develop this into, you know, a new private school or something else, we want the opportunity to look at the plans and then maybe suggest some activities or buffers or something that could benefit the DCR land and Blue Hills. So to give you an example of something where, you know, this is pretty new, in the Town of Randolph, I did this similar presentation to them. We learned through a newspaper that right next to DCR property, they're putting in a crane company with 60-foot-high cranes and they're going to do maintenance on cranes. And if we'd have caught that earlier, we could have worked with them to maybe give us a 50-foot buffer with evergreens. That's really all we wanted. We understand it can be developed. This might have provided a better visual barrier than an eight-foot-high privacy fence, right, which didn't do anything. I mean, luckily, the financing for the crane company, I think, fell through. And so we're not going to have that there. But that's an activity that I'm trying to help protect for the Blue Hills. So that's just my personal thing I'm doing right now with the Blue Hills. Next slide. So, you know, why is this, you know, why am I presenting here tonight? Really, it's collaboration between Milton, Friends of Blue Hills, and DCR. We want to work with you. We want to understand if there's something that comes up and you can have, you have a concern, you're like, why might, why might this be of importance to the DCR and Friends of Blue Hills? You can contact me anytime, contact Jen Klein anytime. You know, I know Milton's going through quite a lot right now with the planning board, but, you know, just to keep it in the back of your mind, we want to understand your town needs and how that fits into protecting the reservation and gathering community support. Most of our members, probably no surprise to anybody here, and most of our donors are from Milton. So Milton's been very generous to us. So this is why, you know, this is important to present and, you know, express our gratitude and thanks to the Town of Milton as well. Continue working with you. So that's it.
That's great. Yeah, it's been a nice, I think, a collaboration. I know two of the CPC projects that were recently approved, one for the Observatory and the other for the Pavilion, are being funded by Milton.
Yeah.
The town. And, and it's, it's a, it's a great, great working relationship, I think.
Yeah.
To continue to...
You know, I think it is. And again, you know, Milton, people from Milton are our biggest supporter. And so, you know, we appreciate, you know, everything the town does and we look forward to continuing to work with you, specifically, you know, with any development, planning issues. I don't know where you are with your rezoning or are you doing a 10-year review of zoning regulations?
We're up to our eyeballs in MBTA zoning, ADU bylaw, East Milton neighborhood...
I think before that came up, your, your previous, your predecessor to Cheyenne was, maybe a couple of years ago, Tim, was talking about, you know, looking, looking...
Looking, yeah.
At the rezoning map. But I know you guys are up to your eyeballs in...
Next year, probably.
One thing we are updating is our open space and recreation plan, where we're identifying all of our, all of our parcels in Milton of what is conservation land, what is DCR, what is trustees of reservation, looking at opportunities to, to add more conservation when we can. It's always something that I think we're mindful of as we, as we balance the development, smart, smart growth, we also balance it with, with keeping in mind that we do want to maintain our open spaces if possible. And we feel very fortunate to have the Blue Hills in Milton.
Yeah, thank you. And when you get to that point, you know, I'm sure that we would love to be able to work with you on that.
Yeah, that's great.
I appreciate your outreach and the presentation tonight. So thank you for coming.
Thank you for indulging me.
How do we get in touch with you or how do you get in touch with Friends of the Blue Hills?
So Cheyenne has my email. And then I can also send Cheyenne, Jen Klein. She'd be the point person, executive director. She, she does, she has meetings with, you know, state representatives who represent Milton all the time that I'm not privy to because I'm part of it, you know, I'm not part of what she's doing on, on that part. But either one, you know, will be, you know, will get the word out and...
And what's the best way, if you want to become and join the Friends of the Blue Hills, for residents who are watching, who maybe didn't know that this organization exists and can help out?
So if you go on the website, I don't know if I put the website back up there in the beginning, but it's friendsofbluehills.org.
There you go.
And there's a volunteer page as well as a membership page. And you can set up your donations right on the membership page. You can look, most people find out about trail maintenance volunteer on the calendar and then they can sign up online to do that. So either of those ways are a great way to be introduced to Friends of Blue Hills.
Just the last question I have is, I've noticed, and this is not the Blue Hills, and it's not because the Friends of the Blue Hills are not doing enough work, but the trash along 138 is so unbelievable right now. It's, it's an embarrassment to the state, I think, and that is a, that's a state road. Are you able to advocate? I don't, I feel like the Friends of the Blue Hills should not be responsible necessarily for that. It should be the state. So any advocacy on that, that portion along the Blue Hills on 138, it's, it's really an embarrassment as you enter into Milton. And it's not, again, on you, but I think coming for your voice and saying, you know, this is our Blue Hills and this is what it looks like.
Yeah, that's important to us, you know, where people are throwing trash onto DCR land.
Yeah.
I mean, our, you know, our focus, of course, is the 125 miles of trails.
Right.
Making sure dog waste isn't, baggies aren't left there.
Those are everywhere.
It's amazingly clean considering...
It is.
How many people use it? So I'm pretty proud of that. But the 138 issue where people are throwing plastic hauls and, and whatever they're throwing off to the side is not great. It's not great period.
And even the off-ramp, you know, coming off the ramp into, you know, onto 138, it's just, it's really, I hope it's, as all of us can bring, you know, our, our officials, our reps and senators can, can really draw focus to that, so.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much. Great, okay. Okay, so we now, next, we have our A and R, 560 Harlan Street. If you'd like to come and join us, thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Petrocelli.
Great, and if you could just, yes.
Yes.
Say it into the microphone, yeah, just...
Nicholas Petrocelli.
Great, good, welcome.
Thank you.
So you have an application if you want to just tell us sort of a...
I have an application in for a change in lot line. It's about 210 to 230 square feet. At the back far corner of 560, that the neighbor is willing to exchange with me for some consideration, probably next to nothing. We're friends. We're not creating anything. We're just squaring off the lot. And that's really it, just a, it's a 71 by, I think, 30 or 73 by 30 little cube. That's it.
It was interesting. Do you know why the lot was drawn that way? Was there some intention on when those lots were separated?
When I bought the property, I thought the, the cube went the other way and that, that's my own mistake. But anyways, when the gentleman out back built his home, they had a survey done and I was surprised to see that, you know, the lot line intruded. And it's, it's just, it's only intrudes by 30 feet. It, it is strange.
Yeah.
I, I didn't expect it and it was a surprise. And we agreed to just take care of it and be friends, so.
That's great.
That's really, it's not creating any additional lots or taking away from the lot or creating any extra frontage or there's, there's no benefit to either property other than the lot is squared off. And that's it. It's wooded, you know? It's just privacy, a little privacy area to block the neighbor. That's all.
And does it, does it give you two acres? Does it give you two full acres?
No.
You don't get to two acres by doing this?
1.3, 4, something. It's only 2...
1.186. Oh, I guess, yeah, that wouldn't be enough.
It's 280, 200 and...
100 square feet, I see.
Yeah, 70...
1.81, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's like a little cube. But it just intrudes.
I get it.
Anyone else have any?
Nope, but Cheyenne did the checklist. She provided the checklist, so it met all the, all the, checked all the boxes for the application. So she didn't flag anything that was outstanding, so.
Right. Yeah.
I'm good.
So I would entertain a motion then to approve the A and R application?
So I'll make a motion to endorse the plan is not requiring subdivision approval for 560 and 572 Harlan Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's it? Wait for something in the mail or...
Yes, you have, I think you dropped the Mylar, the Mylar is often...
Everything's been dropped off.
Everything's in the office, yes. So it'll go, yeah.
It'll go out or do I need to come in?
Yeah, Cheyenne?
Yes. Will you... We have the Mylar, so I can connect with him in the more, oh, Monday, when I'm back in the office. But we have the Mylar. We can get everything settled up with the clerk. I think he takes it to the registry of deeds when it's all said and done.
Correct, okay.
Great.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, we'll be in touch if there's anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Can I just ask a question? Is there a lawyer associated with this transaction?
I do have counsel, Jen Allen, and I'm going to ask her to handle it.
Okay, yeah, it's unusual for the applicant to submit an A and R plan without counsel dealing with it, so.
Can you email Jen Allen the contact information to Cheyenne?
Sure, I have your card.
Me?
Stopped in the office and got your card the other day.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
That's great.
Great, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a pleasant evening.
You too. Okay, so now we can, oh, we just have our, a quick discussion on the vote, the final vote on the zoning articles for May Town Meeting, the site plan approval, and accessory dwelling unit bylaw will be for the May Town Meeting. Just so folks know, this, Nick has asked that we move not both the overlay, East Milton overlay and the flood plain to the June Town Meeting. So we only have these two moving forward. When Maggie, Cheryl, and myself went to the warrant committee, there were just three items that the warrant committee, we discussed maybe having Peter Mello look at the language on those, which I did send to them. They've all been sent to you. There's three small, just minor little changes that I just wanted the board to be able to approve tonight. Cheyenne, if you could pull that up? If you want to do the site plan maybe first or ADU, it doesn't really matter.
Well, I had a quick comment on the ADU. I was talking to Nick earlier and just for keeping the document clean, we're thinking we want to put in a section name if you guys wanted to, just so that it's helpful for the town clerk. And then eventually, when it gets passed, the town clerk can then stick it where they believe is right. Right now, we're thinking we're going to make it section 275, 3.23 in the use regulations section. So we just wanted to run that by you before we did that.
Wait, can you repeat that, Cheyenne? I'm...
She wants to put a section number on it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I was having trouble hearing, okay.
So right here, we'll make it section 275-3.23 under use regulation.
Okay. And Peter Mello was comfortable with doing that, too?
I believe he talked to Peter, but I only talked to Nick about that.
Okay, we'll finalize that, that I...
Yeah, without the code book in front of me to see where it falls in place?
I know.
I guess I don't really know what I'm approving, but if Nick's, I mean, I guess at some point you've got to trust Nick that he's going to be able to put this in the right spot. And I guess I'm okay with that.
We're going to be putting it right after the special permit memory care, so it'll be 3.23.
Because this says by striking section 3.2, subsection A, paragraph 6, and inserting the following, and then it says the section.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I also find it, to navigate, you have to go to the clerks' section to get to the electronic zoning bylaw, which I don't think is intuitive for folks to find.
This zoning bylaw?
The zoning bylaw, yeah.
I got it from our webpage.
Right, but, well, okay, you got it from the planning department webpage?
Yeah, planning board.
Okay. So section, it would be adding right after other uses, so, sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's up on the screen, you've got it, okay.
That's what, yeah, can you enlarge that so we can...
Sure.
See what that change would look like?
So it would just be a placeholder for the warrant. So going into the warrant, it would just be a placeholder for 275-3.23. But we're going to let the clerk eventually pick where it actually goes, but we just needed a spot to put it for now. So where we put it now might not be the final spot after town meeting.
Yeah, so then why are we identifying it now, then?
Just leave it to the clerk.
Okay.
So that's just a question.
Yeah, it was a question. I don't want to...
Oh, it was a question, oh. I was like, whatever you guys want, it's fine.
Well, it seems to make sense here to start with because it has, this is where landscaping business use, medical marijuana, the memory care. So it's really, it's tied to uses here, so I can see why it's suggested to be put there.
But isn't this a Dover amendment use? So shouldn't it be where the Dover amendment starts?
Well, where are you looking at?
Oh, I'm just, I'm not. I wish I had brought my little binder that I got the first day I became a planning board member.
Because I would think it would be with the Dover amendment.
That's what I'm thinking. I do use it, Julia. I use that thing. That way, we could just find out exactly where it goes, you know, because if it were me...
Because it's under a protected use, Cheyenne? That's what I'm...
Right. Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, he just mentioned that it would be recommended that it be a new section in use regulations. And then we just put it as the 3.23 as a placeholder. And then after town meeting, the clerk and the people who run the website and the sorting, they would put it where it would actually go.
I think we should...
Or we can, or we can figure out what happens.
Yeah, I don't think we should make that decision tonight. I think I would, I would recommend that we vote to allow the town clerk to work with the town administrator and, and Peter Mello on... and Peter Mello on-
On the proper placement?
On the proper placement.
Yeah, because by striking Section 3.2, you'd think it would be the new Section 3. This, we're putting in the new Section 3.2 is the way I would take it, but-
Yeah, so, well, uh... Yeah, I... That's the first I've heard about that, so I have not had a chance to ask any questions on that, so. Okay.
So it's not necessary, it's not a necessary thing we have to do, right?
It's not replacing all-
I don't think it's necessary. I think it was more just to keep things in order because the site plan has a section to go to, but the ADU doesn't technically have a section tied to it. So it was more so just to keep everything kind of on the same page.
I think it makes sense. It is a protected use under the Dover amendment.
Yeah.
What I would say is it doesn't, it's not deleting entirety of 3.2 because 3.2 is accessory uses. And we still have accessory uses that aren't made to use. It's just removing the temporary apartment aspect of that or a portion of that.
And is that subsection A, paragraph 6, like?
So I don't know. Maybe, does it go under accessory uses still? Because it is an accessory use. So I think it is a good, it's a question for Peter Mello if it goes under accessory use or-
Yeah, because we're still keeping the temporary apartment by law.
Well, because it's, since it's classified as an accessory use still. An ADU is still an accessory use. And so that's why I wonder if it just gets a new paragraph within.
Yeah.
But maybe not since it's, since it's an entire section.
Yeah, and it's a pretty big thing, right? One, two, three, four.
We want to make it also so it's easy to find.
Right.
Because as we all know, that things are not easy to-
Exactly.
This is not a very user-friendly zoning bylaw as it exists right now.
And we're not striking all Section 3.2.
And it belongs under uses. We can agree with that, right?
Well, it just says by striking 3.2 subsection A, paragraph 6.
Right, it's just that paragraph.
It's just, yeah.
So what they're suggesting is putting in a new section under use regulations, which, which makes sense as a placeholder place. Because it's not, if you keep going, it's not non-conforming. It's not earth materials. It's not floodplain. It's not wind turbines. It's not high area, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it would go in the use section.
Yeah, I get that. Paragraph, so what is paragraph 6? Because the way this reads, they're asking us to strike paragraph 6 of 3.2 subsection A and replacing it with this five-page-
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that, if you go to the accessory, six-
Paragraph 6 is-
It says accessory use shall not include dwellings.
Accessory use shall not include dwellings. So it shouldn't go there.
Well, that needs to be removed.
Yeah, they said it's gonna strike it.
No, so we're gonna strike it and then put our five-page-
No, so I just don't think it goes there.
Yeah, okay.
I, because I think it does belong as a separate section.
Yeah.
Rather than-
But which one?
A new number 6 here, because it wouldn't make sense in the context of everything else.
All right, so-
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. Can I scroll up and down a little bit?
No, this is Cheyenne. That's up on the screen.
Oh, okay, yeah, well.
All right, so maybe that is a good recommendation for now, as a placeholder. Let's, let's follow, let's follow up and have a conversation beyond what's in the articles. Let's talk about those and then, and then we'll have a follow-up. Actually, we will have-
Do we have time?
Yeah, I can ask Peter to look at that. He'll be here later, but not for this. So... Yeah, we need to, I mean, I would vote to let the town administrator and the clerk-
Yeah, I'm with that.
Discuss this?
Yeah, I'm with you.
And Cheyenne, you obviously, and Peter Mello?
Between the four of them, they'll get it right.
But if they could let us know, yeah, we should-
Do we have to vote it, though? It's, I think, my question.
Yeah.
Nick said it wasn't something he thought you had to vote on.
Great.
All right, then, I think because at the very end, doesn't it say that we authorize the clerk to-
Yes, it does.
Correct typos and other things, so. About authorizing it to-
Section numbers and headings.
Providing the section. Yeah, it provides it right there, right?
Yep.
Oh, here's all right.
Okay. Yeah, and to authorize the clerk to make clerical revisions to the section numbers and headings.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're covered on that. Okay. Thanks, Cheyenne, for mentioning that, and I'll, yeah, we'll look forward to hearing how that's gonna be described.
So are we needing to vote this language, Meredith?
So the amendments, so the three, so the, what we want to do is, Cheyenne, do you have the ADU up still?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So on, on the ADU, the only, the only change that was made was number 8 under C8. This was a question that was, that was asked by the warrant committee. And it just adds, "The ADU shall not be used," adding the language, "as a short-term rental or otherwise for boarding, lodging, or commercial use." So that was his recommended language change, just to make that a little more concise and clear. And then the, on the site plan, that was it for that.
So shall we vote that?
Shall we, let's vote yes. So that was the only change. And all the other red line items that were made with the warrant committee, the typos and things that we corrected. So I would ask for a, a motion to approve this article as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the ADU article as amended.
And is this now being resubmitted to the warrant committee?
And we'll just, and we'll let the warrant committee, yeah, and resubmitted to the warrant committee.
And resubmitted to the warrant committee?
Yep, with those small changes.
And I'll second it.
Great, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. And there were only two small things on the site plan approval. Those were on page... Sorry, it's further back. I forgot everything. On page nine, under the decision, we had asked the warrant committee, we wanted, we wanted to get some language, which, which gave an opportunity if, under certain circumstances, we needed an extension beyond the 120, 120 days. The warrant committee recommended that we get language from the attorney, from our town council, on what that would be. And that's where he underlined on the, the last part of the O decision. "For purposes of this paragraph, appropriate circumstances entitling the board to additional review time shall mean, A) the applicant's consent to extend said 100-day period, or the board's determination, in its reasonable discretion, that based on the nature of the application and proposed project, the volume of material or information presented to the board in connection with the underlying hearing, the complexity of any technical or legal issues arising out of the board's review and other similar factors, additional time exceeding said 120-day period is necessary to facilitate inadequate review of the application." So that was his recommendation to add that provision in. So on page nine, and then on page 10, the other item that we had asked, and this was just a small change, clarifying if anyone, for anyone who wants to make an appeal, it would say, it would read, "Any person agreed by a decision of the board made under this section may appeal said decision under MGLs, chapter 40A, section 17, by filing an action with the Superior Court or Land Court, no later," and this is what the warrant committee wanted, just to make, make it clear that it was no later than 20 days following the board's filing of said decision with the clerk in accordance with the, with the procedure set forth in MGL, chapter 40A. So he, that just was making sure that anyone appealing, would be able to look at this and say, "Okay, I have to do this within 20 days." And they just wanted clarification.
I think that's a good idea.
So adding that.
I like that.
So those were only the three, the only two amendments to that. So I would entertain a motion to approve the site plan approval as amended, a motion to approve the site plan approval as amended, and forward it to the warrant committee, the changes to the warrant committee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you so much. And we can now invite Uteal to join us.
Logan.
Hello.
Hello, Zoe.
Hello.
Zoe.
I think Matthew should be on as well. Let me check what it looks like.
Great.
It's just, Eddie, yes. Okay. So let me pull up the relevant slides here. So for today, we were able to get through kind of a first pass at the statute plan that we discussed last time and some updated calculations for the hypothetical adjacent community scenario. So we'll present that through with you. And we also want to just tee up some, you know, just make sure that we've correctly interpreted the pieces that we were going to return to for the rapid transit work. So with that, let me share my screen. And we've also prepared, you know, a couple of things that should enable us to do a little bit of live adjustment with you today if the conversation kind of moves in that direction.
Great, thank you.
And Matthew, if you could do me a favor and take some notes as we're going, that would be great, just so that I can be nimble with the screen sharing. Okay. So today, we thought we'd go through just a couple of refreshers. And then what I just mentioned, the sort of revised analysis on the hypothetical statute plan. I know that there are some more people who are kind of tuning in these days that may not have been involved throughout the entire process to date. So there'll some, there'll be some things that'll move through pretty quickly, just for those that haven't touched on this before, but we won't dwell on them. I did want to give one logistical piece that when we were doing scheduling at the end of our, the last meeting on Monday, Matthew and I both separately missed conflicts that we had with the 410 Planning Board meeting. We think that we can get through enough content with you tonight and on the 7th that the 10th might be a meeting where you could just discuss follow-ups. But I think if you, if that doesn't end up working out, we'll troubleshoot with you when we meet with you on the 7th. But I just wanted to give you a heads up about that, my error during the meeting on Monday.
No, no, no problem. And I think it's better when we sometimes break out our MBTA meeting from all the other public hearings and-
Yeah.
So we can really dedicate-
And Zoe, oh, yeah, you do have it. Never mind. Okay.
Great, okay.
And then I've also penciled in that, the public forum that we spoke about for the 17th, which I heard you're already mobilizing to promote about, which is great. And we've kept, held that 6-9 sort of expectation of when we're gonna be moving towards town meeting.
It's actually gonna be, it's been confirmed it's gonna be on the 16th.
Okay, great, perfect.
That's great.
What's gonna be on the 16th, the town meeting? Okay.
Yeah, it was between the 9th and 16th.
I'll make that update in our notes.
Okay, so, yeah.
Okay, so I wanted to just reflect back to you all what kind of we heard last time to make sure that we're capturing it right. And also to share with you a little bit of our, you know, as we've gotten a little bit more into the weeds on the idea of putting together a statute-based plan. We have come to some suggestions around the assumptions to make. There's, there are so many assumptions that are embedded in the compliance model that are really rooted in the guidelines and subsequently, the emergency regulations that were put into place that we don't think it's really the right tool to use in, in putting together a hypothetical statute plan. So what we're suggesting is that we hold to the commuter rail station area, that we zone for 15 units per acre. And we think that, you know, while in theory this aligns with that 563-unit target that we spoke about last time, there really isn't any piece of the regulations, you know, or, no, sorry, I'm mixing words here, which is confusing. There aren't any pieces of the statute, the law, the letter of the law, that describe what reasonable size means in terms of units. And so we really think it's best to just focus on the station area and the units per acre. There is still a reference to environmental, the environmental code. So we're retaining the excluded land metrics. Wherever there's partial units that result, we are rounding down. And we are not modeling the impact of zoning parameters beyond that 15 units per acre on the, you know, modeled unit capacity, as we've been discussing it for prior work. Because that, all of those things are, are embedded in the models of assumptions, the, the compliance model that the state built around the guidelines and regulations. How does that sound to you all? As, I know it's, there's a couple of like small evolutions from what we talked about on Monday. It's just as we're getting further into it, we wanted to reflect back to you our thinking on it and see how that feels.
I think what I had requested was that we did, instead of 100% of everything being within that half-mile, that 50%, which is allowed with whatever plan is put forth, is allowed 50% within the half-mile of the commuter rail stations and half, half of the land area outside.
But that's mixing the guidelines with the, the emergency regulations with the statute. My understanding was that there was, this was to be statute-only. And, and therefore-
I guess we could look at both, because I think if it's allowed by HLC, there's no reason why-
HLC doesn't allow this method, though. So it's like picking and choosing the things that you like and don't like about the method you're going to choose. I think we're not doing that with the 25% or even with the 10%. We should go with what has been argued is this method.
Right.
So I sort of agree with Cheryl on this. And, and, and to Zoe's point, we don't have, there's no definition of district of reasonable size. So I think possibly your cause of concern, Meredith, is that it's 563 units, when a district of reasonable size may not be 563 units. So that is for, I would assume, the town to decide what a district of reasonable size is.
Because technically, it would be the maximum that could, that could exist because of the developable land of 15 units per acre, so.
But if, if you're going by the language of the statute, as Tom Doherty has presented to us a number of times, it's the developable land area within a half-mile of those commuter rail stations, times 15.
Yeah.
And that's what he's advocated for. That was what was put in our letter to HLC.
That's the unit count. That's not the, that's not the land area, right? That would be the unit count. That's how he got the number of units.
But, but-
563 is the units.
Correct, yes.
But the land area is the 18 acres. I was thinking inside, and then 18 acres would be, is allowed elsewhere by HLC.
I, I still think this plan is, to be cleaned, is disregarding the regulations because it's saying those don't apply. You can't then say, "I want to pick this piece from the regulations and apply it." It's just totally inconsistent with the argument that's being made in this plan.
I understand what you're saying.
But we could do a district of reasonable size.
All right, let's, well, she, Zoe has something prepared, so I don't, I don't want to-
Yeah, so I think this might actually be a little easier to discuss with the numbers. And it's not gonna be reflected back to you in quite the same way as the other ones because it's not rooted in the compliance model. But this, this, what you're seeing here, this slide is just a summary of, you can see the statute text on the left, like we had on Monday. And then on the right, I've replaced this with kind of the assumptions that are embedded in our sort of interpretation of just the text of the law and how we're applying that, so that it's well-understood. But I won't kind of belabor it for this, just as a reminder for those that are kind of new to this. This is the, you know, we're focusing on the commuter rail station area for this hypothetical scenario. If you zoom in, that's the area of town that it applies to. And these are the parcels that touch that half mile radius for the three commuter rail stations. And I've kind of broken out, I'm sorry, on the right here, just some of the kind of acreage statistics associated with the geography that you're seeing on the slide. Note that the north arrows, the north is skewed a little bit for these three, just so we can see them all on the same page. Oh, sorry, there's one other thing I wanted to note. I just did a quick sort of, because this has been a focus of our conversations for most of the time we've been working together, I did just pull the existing land use codes for these three areas, so you can see that breakdown here. Majority, single family, a decent number of two-family, and then a handful of other land uses. So that just gives you a sense of what's included. So this is, this is the output. So what you're seeing on the left is the inputs, on the right, the outputs. So for all of the work that we've been doing to date, for the sake of like comparing apples to apples as much as possible as you're thinking about this sort of output, when the compliance model reports modeled unit capacity, it's only reporting units, parcels on which there are multifamily units, so three units or more. So what you're seeing in this top is just this, you know, inclusive of one to two units. What you're seeing on the bottom here is if you exclude those one to two unit, you know, the parcels where one to two units is possible, but three units, it's not possible. This is a more, as close as you can get to an apples-to-apples comparison across these two methods, so you can understand kind of how this stacks up against the other scenarios that we've been considering. So you can see that it, it ends up with 582 modeled unit capacity. Again, there's all of these kind of like assumptions that we're making that are a little different from what the compliance model has been putting forward for our other work. But that results in if you sort of calculate it the way, roughly the way the compliance model shares modeled unit capacity and density, that would correspond to 11.5 units per acre. And that's with the, only the developable land being in the denominator of that equation. So that's kind of the output there. And I've just sort of done a quick breakdown for you to understand kind of how that's distributing, how this like simple set of rules is distributing across that set of parcels. There are some parcels where there is, there are no units that can be built because of parcel size or ownership. There are around 30 that can only build one unit, around 30 that can only build two, no more. And then there's a little over 50 that can build three to eight units and 16 parcels that can build more than eight, just based on that 15 units per acre constraint. So that's, that's kind of where we landed with this first pass. I'm curious what that prompts for you all, if this feels sufficient or if there are other pieces that you feel you need to see as part of this to move, be able to sort of use it in the way you had in mind.
I think I need to have you explain it again and tie, can you tie it back to the map, Zoe?
Yeah. So this is reporting it, so every parcel that you see here in purple is a parcel that's included and that is developable. It may have some area that is not developable, like wetland area, et cetera, but these are the parcels that are being zoned effectively by this, this concept. And we've grouped them all sort of together as one group. And that set of three kind of sub-districts together produces this result. So the, the reason I broke it out in this way is because the way we've been talking about density and unit capacity to date is diff, it does not include one to two unit developments. And so I wanted to avoid a comparison between things that are reporting very different statistics. So I would focus in terms of comparison on this set here, which takes all three of those areas, so across all three of those areas, you could get to, in theory, up to 582 units that are three-unit or more developments. And amongst those, if you were to calculate just on the actual acreage of all of those parcels, you would have 11.5 units per acre. If you calculated, or sorry, other way around, if, if you excluded, the excluded land in the same way that the state compliance model does, you would have 11.5 units per acre in these, across all three of these sub-districts. If you included land that the state compliance model does not, you would have a lower density of 7.7 units per acre.
And so.
And that may still not be quite landing. This is like a lot of numbers and it's different from what we've gotten used to in terms of understanding them.
It's helpful to hear it again, but just to, what you're excluding are parcels that wouldn't be able to add units, because you said in terms of the one to two and that has to do with the parcel size?
Yeah, so there, if parcel sizes where they wouldn't be able to build more than one or two units, those parcels and all of the work we've been done, we've been doing to date are not counted in the multifamily unit capacity. So in this case, you know, you could still, you know, let's say you have a single-family home and based on your parcel size, you have enough parcel area that under these rules, you could build two units. The state compliance model does not take that into account because it is not reaching the three units that is required to meet the definition of multifamily that was included in the regulations and guidelines.
What size parcels are those then?
So if you do just kind of like the rough, let me do a quick working backwards. So if you have to build two units. Or I'm like, actually pretty bad at live arithmetic, so give me just one, one moment.
So you didn't, you didn't apply the same methodology that we're used to at like 6,000 square feet per lot or 7,500 square foot lot?
Right, so if you did, you know, 15 for like reference, if you had a 5,000 square foot lot, that's point, point 11 acres. And then that times 15 units per acre would get you 1.7. So on a, on a, on a 5,000 square foot lot, you would be just shy of two units. So you would only be able to build one unit under a 15 units per acre constraint.
I guess I don't get it. Why not if we rezoned it so you could build two units?
Because if you're saying, if you're doing 15 units an acre and you have, and that's your max and you have a small parcel, you may not get to three units, right?
So what if 15 units, what if it goes to 16 units per acre? I mean, this thing's fluid, isn't it?
Not from what the parameters that we established last time, which was 15 units an acre. I mean, that.
Minimum 15.
Change of parameters, but that's what we said last time, what their marching orders were.
This is the minimum that you could, in this, in a world where you're just focusing on what the statute says, 15 units per acre is the minimum that you could set.
Right.
And align with what is stated in the law. You could allow 16 units per acre, that would exceed what is mentioned in the statute, but at minimum, you have to provide, allow for 15 units per acre.
Right, so if you're saying exclude the one to two units, so excluding the one to two unit per parcel.
So if you had a 5,000 square foot parcel, what would you have to have to have it allow units on it, right?
You would have to have, yeah.
Could you show us a parcel on the map that you provided of a 5,000 square foot parcel?
It would be the same as the 5,000 square. We just have to, I just assume that it would be 15 units per acre or more, whatever it takes to get to that density.
Well, the, so the way the statute is written is you have to allow, you know, the guidelines and the regulations have specified that it is not just about what you allow, but what you achieve. The statute focuses on what you allow. So if you allow 15 units per acre, that is what the statute has required. It doesn't state that you need to achieve the 15 units per acre in the same way that the regulations and guidelines then made clear.
So that, so we're thinking that if we go to 16 units per acre, then we're not following the statute, so?
You're, you'd be exceeding the text.
But that's allowed under the statute, right, to exceed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we could. Okay.
Yes, we can increase.
All right.
So.
But we didn't.
We still know that multifamily is three units on a lot, right?
Right.
So if you have three units on a 5,000 square foot lot, your density is?
15 units per acre, I thought, that's why.
20, it's 27 units an acre.
27 units an acre.
But we can go higher, it's, it's.
Yeah, I don't understand why we can't, why we're not including.
Like there's some lots that I think we could do, you know, there may be within their, I think Unquity House is within that?
Yeah.
Or that, one of our.
Blue, if we just look at, that was, I was thinking, just look at the Blue Hill Ave.
That we can zone for, you know, I think we have that at how many units? It's six-story, it's a six-story building.
It's like 40 units per acre.
That's like 40 units per acre there.
I thought.
Yeah.
Don't quote me, but I think that's 40 units in that one.
I can give you like five parcel, if there's a specific parcel that you want to know about, I can tell you under these rules how many units.
A district of reasonable size, 15 units per acre, half the town from the commuter rail, right? If we just do the Blue Hill Ave district, I bet you we hit the 15 units per acre. We call that our district of reasonable size. I bet you we meet the statute. But if we exclude the High Park stop and, what's the other stuff's name?
Fairmont.
Fairmont, yeah. Because I think, yeah, I.
Just look at Blue Hill Ave.
Yeah, I think that's where we.
And if it goes more than 15, just accept that it's going to go higher than 15 and it's still within the statute.
There's no definition of reasonable size within the statute.
Exactly, so we can set it.
Correct.
So to say whether it's, we meet it or not, it's, it's not there, so there's no way to determine whether we meet it or not. So it's just a question of whether.
What is reasonable size? Worth, worth saying this is reasonable size.
And if HLC has the authority to determine a reasonable size according to the statute, so it's a submission, you're going to ask HLC to agree.
HLC isn't mentioned in the statute, is it?
Yes, it is.
And they're going to set regulations, right?
They're going to determine.
Or guidelines.
My understanding was they would determine compliance.
Okay, so I would like to submit something that's just the Blue Hill Ave district. That's, that's how I would address this. And obviously, we'll have to have a battle with HLC.
Or demonstrate that that, you know, to, to folks that.
Demonstrates a better word.
I want to say, yeah, to demonstrate that this is what it would achieve. Did you, does that make sense, Zoe? If we looked at just the Blue Hill Ave district, maybe we just pulled that map up separately and maybe we don't do it for tonight, but look at the, just the Blue Hill Ave, our district there and map that out and sort of back out what that would be, how many units per acre, how many total acres on that? Do we know?
So the Unquity House alone is 4.031 acres. There are currently 139 units. So that is 34 units per acre. So at 15 units per acre, that's 60 units.
So that would be our district.
So we're at 139.
District of reasonable size.
Correct.
Right?
Are you describing just this district, what we're seeing on the left of?
Yeah, yes, exactly.
And actually, just half of that district. I might be getting ahead of myself, but just the southern half of that, that district.
Okay, so you're like basically thinking?
Yep, right there, yeah. Look at that, red marker, love it.
And how many units would come out of that? Yeah.
Just tweak it till you get to 15.
So if I'm understanding correctly, the way you're talking about this, you're thinking that the goal is to achieve 15 units per acre in a location that falls within the commuter rail station area, but does not contain all of the commuter rail station area?
Correct.
Right, because the statute doesn't say we have to contain it all, it just says we have to do a district of reasonable size.
And I don't even mind going, you know, further up too, I mean.
We all, I would do that too, but once again, that density denominator, just fear the density denominator always kills us, right? So the more land you add.
Right.
It's like, the denser certain areas have to be.
So yeah, I guess if we could look at that as maybe a district that we could say, okay, this would be a statute if it, as long as it meets all those criteria.
But you're looking at then these single families or two families that are on 5,000 square feet, allowing 27 units an acre.
No, that's why we were going to include all of those.
You mean the ones down.
But you are including them in this circle.
Okay, so we can cut them out, the ones where Blue Hill Ave and Blue Hill Parkway come together, that little, those two little triangles, is that what you're talking about?
I was thinking back at you, taking those out, keeping those out for.
Is that, are those the ones you were talking about?
But, well, I need to.
The map's gone. Can you put the map back up, Zoe?
Yeah, let me just, it sounds like the parcel size is what you want to understand here, so I was just going to try and put together a quick map that shows that. What was the, what was the piece that you wanted to see?
The map we were just on.
Yeah, and it was the lower portion of that, of the Matapan Station map.
Well, this one's called Blue Hill Ave, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All the way down south, yeah, those two little triangular ones, yeah, exactly, if you could omit those.
We would not include that, yeah.
Okay, so just.
Yeah, right.
And so you think like 10 acres there, that might, 15 acres there is going to be deemed reasonable size for the entire town of Milton?
I think it's going to satisfy the statute as written.
It'll just.
Reasonable size as written is 10 or 15 acres?
What is reasonable size to you?
That's small to me.
Okay, so it's not to you, but it is to me, so I mean, HLC I'm sure has a whole different definition, so.
We know, we know they do.
Yeah.
Well, I think if we submit the smallest absolutely possible, we're, they're not going to accept it. Do you really feel like they're going to accept it?
Unquity House is the smallest absolutely possible.
So, so right now, so as I've always said, that I think there's opportunity to do more, and I think we've, we've all agreed there's an opportunity to do more. So the goal though is to do a statute compliant, and this would be a statute compliant, and even if they say no, I think we're probably okay with that. We just want to submit it. We want to submit it and we want to prove that we are statute compliant.
I, I think we have to be careful about using statute compliant because we don't have a way to determine anything a statute compliant without using the regulations. And so it's just a path that people have decided is worth pursuing. I think we need to stop the language of statutory, or it's compliant with the statute.
That we don't have to, that we don't have to do nothing, like that we're not, not doing anything. I mean, this, and then, you know, it's, we have a conversation with HLC. Obviously, we're struggling with, you know, putting maps together, but it's.
So now though, you said, okay, I'm going, you're the four people at the table, or the three, who agree with this approach, you're going to say, I'm going to pick this particular part of the, of these three maps and I've decided, or the three of you have decided that those are the most appropriate to zone. and I've decided, or the three of you have decided, that those are the most appropriate to zone without, there's, there's no rationale to it, except to say that Unquity House is already there. But otherwise, what's the rationale? Why not all three of these? Why not one of the other ones of these?
Because with all three.
There's no parameters that you're setting for yourself in choosing these sites and this location.
With all three, you can't get to fifteen units per acre.
That's, trying to get to that.
Then we just determine that.
Trying to get to the density numbers.
You can, so I, I had assumed that based on our conversations to date, that you wouldn't want to go beyond what the sort of, the minimum density that's required. And if we go to, let me clear my annotations here, so that's not clouding the judgment. So if we go back to here.
Minimum gross density of fifteen?
I'll have minimum gross density.
Minimum. But you could do more, so the minimum's the minimum, but you could do more.
Yeah, so if we increase the density, I'm.
Yeah, so I think it's a simple, I don't think, like, I don't think we need to, you know, obviously, all of this is like working in a, a triple cantilevered, like, argument, but the, I think, you know, what we did is we started with, you know, you set a front-end limit of fifteen units per acre. If you cap it at fifteen units per acre, you end up with these numbers. So the, the model, depending on how you calculate the modeled units per acre, which again is not specified in the statute how that is to be calculated. The, you're getting, you know, close depending on how you calculate it, so we could increase it slightly from fifteen units per acre to, you know, at the, you know, front end, maybe it's seventeen units per acre, et cetera, and I can sort of toggle that until we're achieving modeled unit capacity density that's approaching fifteen.
That would, yeah.
Yeah, that's cool, that'd be great.
And then we don't have to kind of go through an exercise of, like, further delineating which parts of town are subject to the reasonable size, which I think, you know, you're, this is already obviously not going to be like at face value well received by the state, given that they have put together all of their, you know, the regulations and guidelines, but I think going into further logics on what parts of town to consider makes it less coherent as an argument.
So from a planning perspective though, you know, if we didn't have MBTA, this part of town is actually a good place to plan for increased housing because it's close to transit and there are amenities. So the other, and there's already existing some mixed use. You know, you, you know, with the food, the food mart and.
It's not in this half mountain.
It's not in that. So it's already two families, there's already three families, and they could be illegal three families. So we are allowing our homeowners to become legal with their three families. This is a denser part of town. We're not impacting as many single-family houses, because that's been a, a recurring theme. So I think starting in this area, to me, makes sense.
So that's great, so if, if we wanted for, for the seventh to maybe have a map put together with these, raising those density numbers, I think that would would be helpful.
We might also round it up and down.
Right?
Sure.
And there was, I think that some of the shortage of why we're not getting, because literally what we've done is taken every parcel and apply across the board to fifteen units per acre.
Yeah.
And so while we're coming up short in part, is that if you've got one point seven units, you go down to one. If, if we made the rounding cutoff at point five, for instance, so that if you, you were getting to one point six, you could go up to two, or if you're at one point four, you go back down to one, this might equal out a little bit more.
And I, and I think just more holistically, the, what we need as a community and a little bit larger, are actually more three, three-family housing. So I think three-family housing actually promotes more generational wealth. Your, if you think about all the immigrants who came over here, they all bought two and three families. And now with the creation of all these really big multifamily apartment complexes, it's harder to do that. So I like the idea of being able to allow our current residents to be able to expand and capitalize on this as opposed to having some out-of-town big developer come in and they capitalize on it. So that's why, even though if the lots are smallish, they're, this is where our two and, you know, three families already exist, so why not make them legal?
I, I don't know, they're not illegal, otherwise.
Well, they're not permitted, they're not permitted.
So I, I think we have to be careful about calling people's homes and where people live illegal because they're, what, we don't allow three-family zoning right now, we don't have three-family zoning. However, those were built prior to zoning being enacted, so they're pre-existing non-conforming and therefore illegal. So, you know, the fact that you may want to do this zone for other reasons, I, I just don't think we should say, oh, we'll make these legal now, that is inaccurate.
Well, it's offering opportunity, I think is what you're saying.
Right, yes, yes.
Wanting to create opportunity, but to, back to Matt's point, is that some, some we can keep at a, a three unit, but others we can go higher, is what Matt's saying, you know, and we can, we can sort of bump that up a little bit above the fifteen units per acre average. Is that what I'm hearing, Matt? Matt, I'm sorry.
He's muted.
Sorry, I'm unmuting. I'm just saying as a first step, to get the math to work.
Right.
We can ticker with the averages, right? And it's still an open question about whether the requirement is to achieve the gross density of fifteen units an acre through the zoning or to simply allow fifteen units an acre. And I don't, you know, I think you could read the statute other way. But I think, I think if we fix the rounding piece, we'll get closer to, you know, whatever the acreage is times fifteen.
Okay. Okay. That sounds good, is that?
I just quickly did a rounding of them, rounding up instead of rounding down, and got to eight hundred and twenty-five units. And if we calculate it in the way that the compliance model. Sorry, I was doing some live calculations here. If we did that, if we did the total number of units, including the like, you know, one and two-family ones, you would get to sixteen point two nine units per acre. So that would be, you know, eight hundred and twenty-five units, including single and two-family units that are part of that tally. And that would result in sixteen point two nine units per acre.
And that's across all three districts?
Yes.
Great, that's great, thank you. A little more, in my opinion, is okay.
Yeah, there's a little, we'll do some more due diligence just to think about all of the different kind of the pieces that have been held steady based on our interpretation from the compliance model that are a little bit more in flux as we're interpreting it in the context of the statute, but I think the takeaway is it's not so far off.
And it's actually not that far off from, interestingly, from a ten percent plan, from what, or an adjacent community plan would allow for. And it would probably actually create more real, possible for real units being built.
I think looking at these districts are super productive, yeah.
Because of the commuter, the commuter rail location.
Yeah, I think this is worth doing.
And was there any way, I think I may have requested it before, sending us the compliance model, so we can play around with it?
Yeah, the, the compliance model is, as itself is publicly available. Out of the data sets, we've put together a bunch of different interconnected spreadsheets to handle your modeling, because it exceeds the, what the compliance model alone handles well, because of the number of districts you have and the incorporation of mandatory mixed use for the rapid transit. So essentially, yes, but it's more complicated than that, because it's not a single, like, we don't have like a single spreadsheet or a single set of spreadsheets that we've used to do all of this work, so if there's a specific, like if you're interested in like the adjacent community scenario one, or the statute plan one, or the rapid transit one, we would be sending you different.
Yeah, that's okay, could you send all three?
With what districts loaded?
Well, just with the ones that we were just talking about, so that we can sort of play around with it as you're playing around with it.
She's saying she would send you a statutory ten percent, twenty-five percent, but then she's saying what districts? So like the last slide, she, the last presentation?
Yeah, the last one, yes, yeah.
So maybe the one at our last meeting, where you do the ten and twenty-five percent plus this statutory plan?
Yeah, so even though like, because we're running so many different scenarios in each of those, each district essentially has its own, like a, a compliance model can hold five districts. So because we have considered like twenty districts, probably, like there are, there are multiple compliance models and, and we have multiple spreadsheets that combine those models in different ways based on which scenarios we're working on.
Right.
So like, there's.
So maybe we should, what, maybe we should go on to the ten percent and the twenty-five percent for now? And then once we get that narrowed, you can say, this is, this, I'd like this version sent.
Yeah, I think the, the best way to handle it might be for you to email Cheyenne with the request that you have, and then we can be responsive to it in the specifics. There's just so many, like.
Yeah.
Cool, gotcha.
Different combinations.
Details that I, I think it'll be easier that way.
Okay, good. Okay, so that would be great if you could provide a district on that.
I just wanted to understand, to, you said in the beginning of this discussion, that you didn't put in any other dimensional criteria or standards? So if we did say, like height cap at three stories or two and a half, probably three is, is commonly there, but would that change anything in terms of, because, not, because we're not running it through a compliance model, right? We're just.
In reality, it would change.
Right.
What could get built, but in terms of the letter of the law, without the compliance model, the regulations, the guidelines, there isn't a mechanism to consistently estimate that. That's part of the reason why the whole compliance model was built, was to be able to estimate the impacts of those kinds of form-based zoning parameters on units that could be built or could not be built.
But if we were, sorry, Zoe, were you finished with that?
No, I was just going to say, so i- in other words, we can add those in. There's not a, you know, apart from reinventing the compliance model, there isn't a way that we can describe how those form-based parameters would constrain unit capacity, so it's, it's something that could be included if this is what moves forward to town meeting. But it would not have a direct impact on the unit estimation process, because we don't have a compliance model to rely on to consistently predict those numbers.
Okay. And open space, anything else, the same? Any of the parameters?
Same.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, it, it does have a real impact and we can, like, we do test fits all the time to confirm those things, but at this scale, that's really what the compliance model is for.
Right.
To be able to do that crosswalk between the two.
I think the cornerstone of the model is that it presumes a unit is a thousand square feet. In this scenario, there's no such presumption, because it's just purely units per acre. Whether they're six hundred square feet or twelve hundred square feet.
Or two thousand square feet, or?
Or two thousand, exactly. And so I, I think, I don't think it would change dramatically the number of units, because units per acre is very definitive. You, you could only estimate the impacts of setbacks and heights and that sort of thing if you had an assumption about the average size of the unit to begin with.
And the compliance model also factors in parking requirements and open space at, at a minimum of twenty percent, as I recall, right?
Yep.
That's how really zoning has always been, and that's a little bit more organic. You know, you might have, you know, a five hundred square foot unit, or you might have a fifteen hundred square foot. And that's how neighborhoods were naturally and organically created.
Depending on parcel size and shape.
And just to be clear, the one thousand square foot per unit doesn't require that under the zoning, it's just a metric that the state is using to be able to compare apples to apples across many different communities, it's not a requirement that's embedded in the zoning.
Yeah.
That is interesting.
I, I think though, just in general, the fifteen units per acre is pretty easy to get to, even with some dimensional constraints, when you think of the, you know, the triple-decker on a five thousand square foot lot is, is almost twice that density.
Right.
So just to get a kind of visual on what fifteen units an acre looks like, it's, it's even less than that.
But would we also have parking and open space with that three, with the triple deck around five thousand? I guess we would have open space, but not forty percent maybe?
Yeah, they usually have, I mean, that's just sort of a typical scenario. Sometimes the lots are bigger, but usually there's a little bit of a front yard, there's always some backyard, there's usually a side yard with a driveway or something similar.
Okay.
I'm ready to move on.
Yeah. All right, thank you, this was great.
So I think, I think it's clear the pieces that you want us to move, sort of refine with this, we'll come back to you with those revisions for the seventh. I'm going to go through the adjacent communities, what I, community scenario calculations that sort of build on what we talked about on Monday, but as a foundation for that, I just wanted to kind of toggle through the districts that we've been including thus far and the, the ones that we're considering as we're kind of looking at swapping districts in. This is also a way of confirming as we prepare to do the rapid transit revisions that we discussed on Monday, making sure that what we heard from you on Monday and how we've sort of interpreted them and sort of drawn them out is consistent with what you had in mind. So just as a sort of a reminder to toggle through these and sort of adding them to our kind of collective image here with the, the relationship to the transit areas and such, this is the, the Blue Hills Parkway corridor that we've been working with, the Matapan Station sub-district, the Elliott Street corridor. And just as a note, the, the sort of pink color here is the density denominator deduction layer, so that's the areas that are considered undevelopable, generally based on environmental constraints. So you can just kind of see like the interaction of those with the districts. This is the test fit that we did to confirm that a six thousand square foot parcel could accommodate the number of units it needed to while meeting the other form constraints, like a point five FAR, over forty percent of open space, the setbacks that were discussed. So this was the basis of the rule set for Elliott Street corridor. For the Matapan Station, or sorry, the Milton Station collection of districts, we have the mandatory mixed-use ones and then the straight three A residential-only ones. The Granite Ave district, so we. The Granite Ave district that we spoke about last time with that added sort of, sort of pieces that are in play relative to the state, sort of giving some special consideration to the unique siting conditions that you have for Granite Ave North. And last but not least, the East Milton Square one. So those are, those are the base districts that we've been talking about for a long time. I just wanted to have that kind of fresh so that we could, as we're talking about these new ones, we could kind of more easily compare back and forth in relationship to them if need be. So these are the, the set of six sub-districts that we talked about on Monday and the sort of the unit numbers that I transcribed for what was sort of felt reasonable on those sites that was sort of comfortable and that the planning board would be willing to consider. Is there anything that jumps out to you in here that does not align with what you were thinking?
Well, the Randolph Ave one is not, with the access road, is not in line with what I'm thinking.
Right, that would, you would prefer to have that one not be zoned, correct?
Yeah, or greatly reduced. I'm okay with leaving it in, but not at 120 units.
What do you think it should be at?
It's already a 40 unit 40B there.
So it's 40 units.
It's over five acres up there.
It, it, it has an access road, access road.
This is, it's, we ran the numbers with, with the right-of-way included. It's 6.2 acres, but there's like a private access drive.
And that includes the 40, the 40 units already.
Does not.
It does not, so that would be then 160 units.
Do that one, one second, and then we can come back to the other ones.
Well, we created it as all one district.
Let's see what they have in the presentation.
It would be these four parcels. These three are, have a shared owner. This is the 40B site.
It includes the 40B, the 40.
The 120, so.
So 120 minus the 40 units?
It's 80, it would be 80 units again.
I mean, this property is gonna change hands most likely.
And something will be built up there.
And something's gonna be built there. And if we don't give an opportunity for it, then it won't, we won't be counting it towards its own capacity. We'll be getting units. So it, it, it makes sense to me to keep it here and makes sense to think of the density at a level that would be an attractive alternative to a 40B. Because the approval process through and as of right zoning would be much, and with a site plan approval, would be much different than a 40B approval process.
And it might go 40B anyway, you know? What we're doing right now, 80 units up there might not be enough.
I'm just saying, to me, it's too much.
Well, so maybe we could dial that number back.
Can we just have them run the presentation of what, how they did it with this number and see what it looks like?
Yeah, let's keep going, Zoe. Thanks.
So I haven't run the numbers for these ones yet because this is associated with the rapid transit ones. We'll, we'll have that for you on the seventh. But I can, if there's a number that you want us to test in, you know, in addition to or in lieu of the 120, I'm happy to do that and show you what the results are next time. We just didn't have time to do the full modeling of these ones.
So can we go back to the, the number slide then again, Zoe?
She said in addition to, so she can run two, so tell her what you want. Like, I'm happy with 120, but if you want to see 80, you can.
Sorry, you meant this one, right? So if this 120 units is inclusive of the site that has the 40B at 40 units, so you can think of that as it's a delta of 80 units.
Yeah, I, I understand the delta. I still think it's too much.
But if you take it from here, if you, if you take it, if you take it from here, you're putting it somewhere else. Where do you want to put it? Because we have the 435 that we were making up. I think we should, we agreed to that last time. I think we should have them do that analysis and see what it looks like.
No, no one's saying she can't do the analysis. She's just saying she can do that and something else. So she could run 120, she could run 80. I'm just asking.
Well, I'm just saying where would, if you're taking it down, where would you put it?
This thing is so fluid. We're gonna find out, but let's check it out.
I'm just asking Maggie. She wants to take it from here.
I would say.
Across, but if you're taking some from here, where would you want to put them?
I understand that, but again, from a planning perspective, Randolph Ave is not, there's no amenities. There's no rapid transit or trolley. Again, there's 240 bus runs once an hour. So from a planning perspective, this is not an ideal spot for it. So there are, I don't know at this moment in time where it would go. I mean, it could go.
I mean, I think.
And to ask where it's gonna go isn't realistic, but I mean, this is a site that has a road that dumps.
Oh, I know, I know where it is.
I mean, it's perfect for a development.
I have been up there numerous times. I know it very well. I was gonna rent the spot up there. I know it. So I don't need a, a description of what it is.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Sounds like maybe it's.
Doing an analysis.
Do the analysis and come back to you with it and then we can decide if it's worth zoning at all based on that and the, all the other things that are in balance with it. Is that?
Great.
Fair to say, Maggie, it doesn't sound like there's another, like another level of units that would, would feel appropriate to you in this location.
So.
I think if we could go, if we could lower that.
Think about it.
Yeah. I think it's worth doing the analysis just to see how it, where we are in it. And maybe then we can, we can look at reducing that.
Yep. Okay, so this is the, just sort of on the map so people can understand kind of where these are. So there's some swaps here from what we spoke about on Monday. So the paper mill site, we, we took what was the Truman Parkway District, which included four residential parcels along Truman Parkway, have consolidated it to just be the paper mill site. We also for, to help with your density numbers, removed the right-of-way that we had included, the MBTA rail line right-of-way. So that brings your acreage down for that, which should help a little bit with density boosts. So it's, when you take the, the sort of environmentally sensitive area out, that's 2.5 acres of developable land area. Brushwood is in here as it was before. Same thing with St. Pius. The Ice House site we added right here, that's just two acres. And then 711 Randolph Ave is as it was when we presented it on Monday. And Randolph Ave and Access Road we've added back in here at that 6.2 acres. So just to kind of run through these to confirm this is making sense to folks. So this is that, the paper mill site without the rail right-of-way that we had been including with it before. This is close to the Fairmont Station commuter rail stop and the Brushwood site that we were looking at is, is right here. So they have adjacency to one another. The St. Pius one is, as we were discussing before, it's just a standalone parcel located near the Reedville Station. And then the Ice House site, this is, I think, has a weaker argument than the others, like standalone parcels that we're looking at, the Granite Ave North and the, the paper mill site, because those have really tangible physical barriers, infrastructure barriers. Whereas this one is just a larger parcel within a residential context. So this is, I think there's a less chance that you'll get special exception from the state on this one. It could be one where you look at consolidating it with some adjacent parcels to create a district that does meet the five acre minimum. I'm curious if you want us to look at that or if you want us to just run it as a standalone and understand that it might not pass muster with the state as a standalone parcel.
It'd be nice to have a backup if that doesn't.
Yeah, maybe just run it as a standalone just in case, but understanding it's, yeah.
And then we analyze another district somewhere, because I think we talked about Brushwood being too large, right? At our last meeting?
I think.
I could've swore we talked about that.
Brushwood generally is, is not, when we've plugged it in to the, to swap in for other districts, it has not helped your numbers significantly. It's, it's done fine, but it hasn't. It's a little bit less dense and a little bit larger than what the other districts it's sort of swapping in for. So it, yeah, might not be one that makes the final cut depending on how we, how it all shakes out.
So we may have to add a few more somewhere.
Yeah, so it sounds like we just, the inclination is to run it as is and if it, just have other alternatives available.
Zoe, a question. Since, since Monday and you've had time to think about these, and these locations and these numbers, does it make sense to you to run it, to run these, except for this one, which you've just expressed concern about the rationale behind?
This one, if, if left to me, I would take this one out because it's, it's essentially a single parcel. It doesn't have a lot of physical barriers that could help you argue that it is a single site. The only thing that distinguishes it from the parcels around it is that it's large enough to accommodate multifamily.
And how many acres, acres is it? Two and a half?
This one is, I think it's two straight. Let me check. Yeah, just two on the dot. I think it's like, it's like 1.99 or something.
Okay, so maybe we leave that one out.
But we'd have to add another one somewhere.
Do we?
You're not, you don't need this in like an inherent sense. It's really just, I know that there was the desire to kind of spread, you know, spread the, the units that you need to make up for across as many sub-districts as possible to be able to achieve that in a more distributed way with, at a lower density. So this can contribute to that approach, but it is not necessary to achieve that approach. There are other sub-districts that we're looking at that could serve that purpose.
What was the density of this, Zoe? I forget, of the Ice House?
We talked about penciling this one in at, let's see, my notes. At 54, maybe 70 max is what I have in my notes.
So that's like 35 units an acre, 30? So that's, that's pretty dense.
Yeah.
54 is what's on it now.
Even at 54, it's 27, but we pencil, we add a few, it gets us. I'm just saying, if we lose that, we lose 30 units per acre, which is the key to all this. You gotta have dense parcels to make up for the non-dense parcels.
Sounds like it would be worth us running with it and without it. Does that make sense?
That'd be great.
You can easily see it, how it, what role it's playing.
Cool.
Because we're basically, for the, for the rapid transit analysis that we're doing now, based on the guidance on Monday, what I'm planning to do is basically take this collection of districts at this density and plug them in for, plug all of them in for Elliott, for, sorry, for East Milton Square, see what, how that lines up, make adjustments as needed. Plug all of them in for Granite Ave South as a swap, see how that shakes out, balances needed. Plug all of them in for both Granite Ave South and East Milton Square and see how that one shakes out. So it's kind of like an aggregate approach based on what we talked about last time. So it sounds like I would just, I would do that with the full collection of these sites and then I would do a version of it that drops Ice House out.
So, and, and drop East Milton Square, right? Because I think East Milton Square was one that we.
She said that.
You did. Okay, I'm sorry. It's hard to hear, so.
So Zoe, one other thing. Can you go back to the Access Road Randolph Ave site? There's a parcel that was included previously to the upper right of the.
Yeah.
And you don't include that here. What was your thinking for excluding it?
Yeah, we did a little bit of research with Cheyenne and Nick on that. Let me just pull up our correspondence and maybe what our rationale was there.
I think it's landlocked.
I think it was an access issue. So these, this is, the complexity here is while access road exists physically, it is, it still requires like explicit, like legal permissions to use it for that purpose. And so.
And so it doesn't have access, right?
Better documentation to argue that there is access in place for the parcels that are included in this diagram now. It would be weaker for that last one.
And is that privately owned or owned by the town?
That, this parcel is privately owned based on the parcel data I was looking at. The fragment here, I believe, is, there is some town ownership.
And what about further up? Isn't that owned by the town where it's not included?
The animal shelters there?
No, but even further up.
Oh, yes, it is, I think.
That's owned, right by the park department, maybe? Well, it's just interesting that when, you know, the, the town was looking at a place to build the school and they looked up there and they said it wasn't suitable.
Didn't Zulus put that in conservation when he did his land swap? He took a bunch of this land back here and put it in conservation, so it's untouchable.
So this right here, this little triangle and then continuing up here and then to the land that's on the east side of Access Road here, that's all town land. This small, smaller parcel here is privately held.
And we can't zone town land unless it's identified, right?
Yeah, it needs to be in your housing production plan or there needs to be documentation of the intent to dispose it.
How quick does it take to get that re?
Well, there was a committee that took maybe a year. I was on that committee, the, the last two committees for the housing production plan.
Is that annual or is that five years, 10 years?
Five years. The planning board and the select board are the ones who adopted it and were to implement it. It's unfortunate that it.
So did the committee come to the planning board with the housing production plan and it never got implemented or what happened?
It got implemented. It lasted five years and the expiration date happened. So the select board.
Is the committee still active?
No, the select board set up, established a, under Linda Collins, when she was on the select board, a housing committee for the purposes of updating the housing production plan. No one has done that in the last year to, to do the same thing, to update it again.
So the committee's still there, it just needs to meet or the committee disbanded?
It was disbanded, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they were all members. I looked up the membership. They're all not involved. Hey, okay. Oh, yeah, not all.
But Zoe, in, in the, this diagram or this plan aerial view, there's that gap between the yellow lines? Is that an easement or something?
That's a private way that has, that provides, from what I understand from the research that we were doing, that private way, like, in, you know, in theory is providing access, but it's, it is, would have to be like legally documented that it is doing that.
All right, thank you.
Access is something that the state does look at closely, but you know, if there's a sufficient documentation, even if it's unconventional access, if it's well documented, it still can get through. It's just, we need to make sure that we have that documentation in place, which is why we thought we'd focus on these ones because they seemed like they had the strongest case. And just with this set of four parcels, you can get to the five acre minimum. So you don't really need that last one.
All right, thank you.
And it wouldn't be considered spot zoning if it's all one single ownership, is it?
This does have two owners. There's an owner for the.
Correct. Today, today does, correct.
The spot zoning isn't typically argued based on ownership. It's typically about the, the relationship of the parcels to the fabric around them. And if there's a, like a, something that distinguishes those sites in a more inherent way from what surrounds them, that is the logic behind the distinction that is guiding the regulation.
Because I always thought it was more ownership. You didn't want to just zone one particular zone, property when it was just a single owner.
It's part of it, but it's, it's in combination. It's part of it, but it's, it's in combination with a lot of other factors and it's, it has to be that, it's essentially, it's trying to prevent, you know, special treatment for individuals that is not rooted in a planning logic.
Okay, great. Yes, so again, the planning logic for me is there's no amenities, there's no access to, you know, reliable public transportation. So my, the planning logic here for me is flawed.
The bus line is reliable, Maggie, so.
Not for my, my employees take that bus line, it is not reliable.
Just to be clear, it's about the distinction of, if you're drawing a boundary for a particular zone, where you're drawing the boundary is the thing that is, has to pass muster for spot zoning. There has to be a reason why the boundary is in that location and not one parcel over. So it's, there's, what you're talking about is a total, a valid point, it's about like the bigger picture planning rationale for why you would want to zone for something in this location, but in terms of distinguishing one parcel from another, it's, it's really about, you know, is there a planning logic that is solid, that distinguishes that set of parcels that you're looking at from the ones that are on the other side of the boundary you're drawing?
Okay, so, all right, so I think we can, should we keep moving at this juncture here?
Yep, so it sounds like, I think we've, we haven't gone through all of them in detail, but I think we've focused on the ones where there were concerns. So I think I'm inclined to keep moving and look at the adjacent community scenarios. This is updated analysis from last time that has some takeaways that I think we can work with together. And if there's some tweaks that you want me to do, I'm set up to be able to do some of that live, I'll just have to kind of do some screen sharing swaps. So as a reminder, we, we sort of last time arrived at having this set of four sub-districts as a base, and then we wanted to look at how 7-Eleven Randolph Ave and the Paper Mill site could play a role in filling out that approach and what the sort of differential impacts were of them and what those two sites could enable in terms of, like, establishing more controls for Elliot Street Corridor to limit the number of units further or to increase the minimum lot size for the smallest tier. So I'm not going to go through this, but just for those that have it as reference, for those that missed what we were doing in 2024, this is the logic, this is for rapid transit, this is the category Milton is in today, and this is the sequence by which we developed a set of parameters for adjacent community. Again, I'm not going to go through all the logic, but I wanted, since we have new people tuning in, I wanted this to be available to folks. Based on that, we have these parameters that we're looking at for this scenario. The main difference that I want to call attention to is the multifamily unit capacity, so we're looking at, aiming for 985 units instead of 2,461. This is just spatially, that, like, you know, the base assumptions for this. And then what we're looking at is, you know, reducing the Elliot Street Corridor to be focused specifically parcels fronting Elliot Street. And then here's where we have started to kind of run those scenarios. So I've highlighted here the parameters that are actually, like, directly influencing the numbers that are resulting, so that you understand where there's, you know, where you'll have an impact in, in adjusting those numbers. So this is a scenario where we look at the kind of the base of Granite Ave, Mattapan Station, the Elliot Street Corridor, Blue Hills Parkway, plus just 7-Eleven Randolph Ave, and holding to the parameters that we have developed together for Elliot Street Corridor that allows for four units on the, the larger parcel sized tiers and starts at 6,000 square feet for minimum lot size for that smallest tier. This one is pretty good, it stays pretty close to the, the 985 number for the unit capacity, and it's riding comfortably above the 15 units per acre, but not dramatically above. The place where, like, the, like I said, the sort of most direct lever for adjusting those numbers is really the units per acre and the FAR constraints on 7-Eleven Randolph Ave. We can all go through the, all of them and then we can come back and tweak the ones that are most of interest to you. The next scenario looks at the Paper Mill site serving in this role. As a starting point, I penciled in these numbers, but, you know, I think we should continue talking, if this is, you know, if we want to move forward with it, we should continue talking about what density would enable the Paper Mill site to be a viable development site. Our, our sort of guess is that something between 125 and 150 units and six stories would be about where the development community would need to see this to be able to have this be considered for the development that would be needed there in terms of investment and infrastructure and access. Obviously, there's a lot more that would need to be do, done to confirm the actual feasibility thresholds for a development here, but just sort of high level, maybe Matthew, you can speak a little bit to some of the, sort of, our work experience that informs some of that thinking.
Yeah, I think it's highly dependent on whether it's rental or condominium, and I think at a, as a rental, you know, rule of thumb, developers like things around 125 or 150 because it's efficient from a management standpoint, but once you get to those numbers and the parking that development is going to want to have, the parking becomes very constraining. I think in this kind of site, which is in reality car-dependent, rental property is going to want to have 1.5 spaces per unit just to make it attractive to renters. I can see a scenario where a developer might take another path, which is to develop large, expensive condos that have less of a parking footprint, but get maybe more value from the development itself. So I think it could, it could sort of go either way. The other factor about this site is that it's very constrained on the floodplain, not to mention obviously access, but there's a big chunk of it, you know, look at the density denominator and it's, it's a full acre less than the, the actual acreage. The, the positive on that is that you get a kind of density bump because the density's being counted against just that constrained area, not the entire site.
That's just kind of some, something to chew on as we kind of go through iterations on this and refine an approach if we want to kind of make some tweaks to the Paper Mill site parameters to make it more compatible with that development, sort of feasibility thresholds that we think would be relevant. But for now, I've plugged it in sort of closer to that 90 number that we talked about last time, and you can see that with, you know, with those numbers plugged in, that this is sort of comfortably over both the unit capacity target and the units per acre target. So we're at a little over 1,000 for unit capacity and 16.8 for density. So then the next set of kind of scenarios that we looked at, take that, sort of the, the capacity that's coming from the Paper Mill site and the 7-Eleven Randolph Ave site and look at how we can use that to reduce the Elliot Street Corridor.
Wait, so I just have a question, how come you didn't apply that same methodology about being car-centric at the Paper Mill site to the 728 Randolph Ave? The 728 Randolph Ave site is way more car-centric than the Paper Mill site, but yet you were only saying the Paper Mill site is 90 units, that's your recommendation, and then at the Randolph Ave site, you're saying it's 120?
They're dramatically different acreages and the access for the Paper Mill site is very constrained in term, like, the infrastructure investment required is very different, but I hear you, it's, it's a, it's a planning decision about, you know, where units should go, where it's appropriate to have housing, but there's also, the Paper Mill site has a lot of really specific constraints on it that make it more difficult to solve for development and therefore make the density more important to make it viable.
So I would think that Paper Mill site, the density should be increased over 90 and even over 150. If you're trying to make it more attractive to a developer, I think that's a site that can handle more density.
I, I think it's just a question of whether you want to make it attractive to a developer and you want development to actually occur there, or whether we're just, you know, kind of playing with numbers to sort of meet, meet compliance. I think it can go both ways. If we're genuinely interested in development feasibility on a particular site, we might also begin to play with some of the parking spaces and the density and that sort of thing.
So I think in this, because this is a, this is the adjacent, so we, we don't need to bump, you know, let's, we'll keep, keep going, but I hear what you're saying.
But, okay, but if it goes to a rapid transit...
That's a whole different, that's a whole different conversation, yes, I agree.
Yeah, so this site also factors into the rapid transit scenario, it's one of the ones we'll be folding into that analysis, but we just haven't done it yet. So it might be that it is penciled in at different, with different parameters for the two scenarios that we're evaluating it for. So just to kind of elaborate from there, thinking about the role that those sites can play in further reducing the Elliot Street Corridor, this takes the units per lot numbers down from four to three for the tiers two and three of the Elliot Street Corridor, but holds to the minimum lot size that we've been talking about. You can see that that's still quite comfortable, the, the units are comfortably over the 985 and we're a little bit closer on, or we're at 16.1 on density versus the 16.8 before, so still well above the 15 units per acre. So basic takeaway here is there's, there's room to spare. The next piece that we were asked to look at was to see if there was room to further drop down the, the Elliot Street Corridor Tier One, or sorry, increase the, the minimum lot size for the first tier of the Elliot Street Corridor from 6,000 to 7,000. You can see that impact here. It, the density starts to drop down to, much closer to the 15 units per acre, and then if you increase it to the 7,500, you drop down further. So that we'd need to sort of increase, you know, in 7-Eleven Randolph and Paper Mill to a higher density in order to support these parameters for Elliot Street Corridor. So that's, that's what I have for you, and again, I can do some, like, live number crunching on some of these if there's one in particular that you want to sort of focus on, or if there's specific parameters that you take issue with or want to see different for, you know, planning or feasibility issues.
Can you go back one slide, Zoe?
Mm-hmm. Because I think that's the one that we were, seemed to be united on thinking that was the preferable one.
So the, what I would say about the Elliot Street Corridor here, it's very similar to what it was in the 2023, just a 500 square foot lot size difference. So from what people understood about the Elliot Street Corridor there, there's not much change here. So then it becomes...
I'm sorry, at 7,000 or at 6,000?
This is at seven.
Okay.
And it gets us at 15.2 and, you know, closer to the target. And then it keeps Granite Ave North, which we've all agreed is a good location. I think we've agreed 7-Eleven is good and the Paper Mill site is good. So I do think, I think this is ready to take to the public and get feedback on as a 10% hypothetical.
And this allows, and this allows that reduction of that, of Elliot Street Corridor, the boundaries, the boundary reduction, yeah.
Yeah, all of these measures I'm showing you today assume that.
Okay, yeah, I would say this would be my, I would, would...
So I think, I think this is ready to present, and then hopefully we can be at a place on the rapid transit at our next meeting to feel the same way, that it's ready to present, and maybe it has a couple of options that are presented, you know, that people can weigh in on.
And then the statute would be ready too, so we're in a better place. And I agree that, that I would look at things differently for a 10%, you know, an adjacent versus a 25% would have to be looked at differently, you know, because, and that's the problem where I feel like the 25% plan, I, I feel like we end up feeling like we're putting a square peg in a round hole.
Correct, and that's why we're struggling, that's why we've struggled for three years because 25 is just really difficult to get to.
Because we don't have the land area, half of it's in Boston.
Well, I mean, if we look at this, the Paper Mill site here is at zone capacity of 109. We've just heard that that's not likely to be economically viable for the particular conditions of this site, and it's probably why the 90 units that the brownfield zoning allows hasn't yielded a project, so...
Maybe look at density, yeah.
You know, I think...
Increasing that density.
The reality is here, 7-Eleven Randolph Ave is not going to produce any units, so Granite Ave North, if the office building and the office market continues to not be terribly popular, maybe that would be, but we're really looking at a 10% plan that's not going to yield much new housing, so...
Well, do we want to, if we want to yield new housing, go down to 6,000 square feet on Elliot Street.
I'm just pointing out the fact that, I mean, according to, I mean, this is what the goal of this 10% was, right? To, to meet the, the requirements, but I'm just pointing out that it's not likely to yield housing, is all.
Yeah, I think the goal of all of it is to meet the criteria, even under 25% plan, right?
Will you look at extra space storage? I think there's a lot of areas that we would see development, but, all right, so, so I think this is a good place to pause if this, and to, if there's anything else, Zoe, that you would wanted to add before?
No, I think that's good. We'll, we'll get to work on the revisions we talked about for the statute plan and also the rapid transit as a follow-up for the seventh, and we'll plan to come back to you with hopefully some alternatives that you feel comfortable going to the public with.
Before they go, do you want to see if there's anyone on Zoom who has any questions?
Yes. If there's anyone in the public who, on Zoom, who has any questions that you might want to ask?
Comments.
Or comments. Just raise your hand. Cheyenne, are you seeing anyone?
Um, no hands, those are now.
All right, good. Well, thank you so much, Matthew and Zoe, I appreciate your time and effort on this.
Another great meeting, it was very productive, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, look forward to seeing you soon.
Sounds great.
See you later.
Thank you.
So long, everyone.
Good, thank you. So the last item on our agenda is to, for the board to move into executive session. I'd like to ask for a motion to move to executive session pursuant to GL, Section 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation entitled Joe Henning et al. versus Planning Board et al., Norfolk Superior Court Civil Action Number 2582 CV00293. An open meeting, an open meeting may have a detrimental effect to the litigation, litigating position of the planning board. The planning board will not reconvene in open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Is there a motion?
Is that so moved? Because I'm not repeating that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.